Seven o'clock. I'll call to order the Victorville City Council meeting along with the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Airport Authority, the Rail Authority, the Library Authority, the Water District, and if I've missed any, we'll call those to order as well. I want to welcome each and every one of you here this evening. We're pleased that you're here to participate in the affairs of your city. The custom inhabit of this city is we commence every meeting first with an invocation. Tonight it will be given by Gene Selig from the Bad Bad Bar, Michelle Mahala, and then it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance which will be led by our Chief of Police, Captain Mark Taylor. Ann?
Thank you Mayor Caldwell, and we want to thank you and the Board, the Council, for the great job you're doing, and brought a few members of our synagogue here in the front row.
Welcome to all of them.
Thank you. God, guardian of life and liberty, may our nation always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those who are in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonders of creation and alert to the care of planet Earth. May we never be lazy in the work for peace. May we honor those who have died in defense of our ideals. Grant our leaders wisdom and forbearance. May they govern with justice and compassion. Help us all to appreciate one another and to respect the many ways that we may serve you. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and our country be sound in body and spirit. Baruch ato adonai, she'orcha levadha bid yira navod. Amen.
... the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into the formal agenda, we have a proclamation and then a presentation. We will do the proclamation first, and I'll invite Jose Arianas, Justin Foster, and Hilario Holden to come to the front, please.
Nobody wants to talk.
Thank you. Just like to say, we look forward to the opportunity to share in some closer interaction with the citizens of Victorville, and we're going to have some fun, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Just tell them a little bit about what's coming up.
To be honest with you, I just want to invite all of you, and you know, bring family, friends, and you know, I'm told that we're all going to have a great time, so.
All right, let's give these guys a big hand, okay? Now I'll invite Nancy Martin from Southern California Edison. She has five minutes within which to make a presentation concerning the state of the utilities. So Nancy Martin from Southern California Edison.
Thank you, and I, five minutes, no problem. Distinguished Mayor Caldwell, council members, staff, thank you for indulging me and having me here tonight to give you an update on the state of the SCE system. There was a presentation, but if you don't still have it, then I'll just go ahead and win.
Nancy, I don't think you need that part of them. Flip it off.
Yeah. And thank you for indulg-- oh, yeah. Thank you for indulging me. I should have been here a little earlier, but wasn't able to do so. Just to give you an update on what's happening with Edison, we are an investor-owned utility. We have 4.8 million customer accounts. We service 50,000 square miles of territory. Communities we serve are 428 cities and communities, 11 counties, 13 million residents, for those who didn't know. Just real quick, the things that we have going on right now, we have award-winning energy efficiency programs that we would encourage our customers to engage in. We are the leader in alternative and renewable energy. 16 percent of our portfolio right now is renewable energy, and we're looking to increase that up to 20 percent of the state mandate. We are committed to preserving and protecting the environment with initial green technologies. Currently, we are investing over $13 billion in infrastructure replacement. As you all well know, during the turn of, actually in the '40s, much of our infrastructure in the state of California is aged, even as it relates to utilities and water, sewer, pipes, roads. So Edison right now is investing in this infrastructure, employing advanced technologies in electric infrastructure, smart grid. We have, you'll be seeing what we consider smart meters that are going to be given to our customers probably the end of this year, and the first quarter of next year, we'll be engaging in a program to install these smart meters on our customers' meters that will actually give our customers the opportunity to engage in energy efficiency themselves. It puts the energy efficiency in their own hands. It's a two-way mechanism to where, it's two-way communication to our customers can actually tell their appliances how they want their appliances to run, so. Again, we're engaging in distribution and transmission investment in our communities. Some of the things that we're doing right here in Victorville is that we have increased our substation capacities at various, various substations. We have substation upgrades. This is to increase the reliability for a fast-growing area that we have, and each one of these substation upgrades and all is an investment of multi-million dollars of investment in your community. We also have potential underground projects, and the Spawley Road project that we're working with, your engineering department, to get that on and get that working. We've had a pre, what we call a pre-summer huddle with all of our engineers and planning managers and troublemen in this area so that we can make sure that we're ready for the summer, the summer usage, if you will, to make sure that our reliability is what it should be. We have a multitude of information that will be going out to our customers so that they can be engaged in energy efficiency programs. We have a new one coming onboard called an air conditioning tune-up program which allows our customers to tune up their air conditioner prior to the summer capacity so that their air conditioning will be running efficiently. I brought with me Ken Goodwin, if he wants to stand up. He's our planning manager and also doubles as a district manager for this region. He is one of the, one of the many people who supports me as I support the region in delivering products and services to this community. Edison, and Edison customers have engaged in so many energy efficiency programs in the last five years that we've saved enough energy to power 500,000 homes for the entire year and also have relieved some of the tons of emissions in the air. So one of the things that we're going to be encouraging our customers to do is to engage in energy efficiency programs as we move forward. Once again, Edison is leading the nation in, as in renewable portfolios, if you will. There is a solar initiative, a 50 percent solar initiative that has made the ballot this year that you'll probably see on the November ballot, and it is to encourage the state of California to move from 20 percent renewables to 50 percent renewables of their portfolios. It will affect not only the investor-owned utilities, but all municipal utilities. We are going to be against that initiative. We believe it to be risky. We're asking if you, if you're a company, or if you're accustomed to take a look at it, to really take a look at it in detail. There is another initiative that's coming out that's called the California's Against Risky Initiatives that Edison is going to be supporting. The League of California Cities will be supporting, and the California Chambers will also be supporting. With regard to, how many more minutes do I have? With regard to advanced technology, we're also investing in what we call smart technologies for our transmission and our circuitry so that we can, so we can relieve problems before they occur. It will shorten times for outages, and... What you'll be seeing in the near future is a regu-- is a regular communication to you, maybe on a quarterly basis, so that you understand what's going on, not only within Edison, but specifically within your city. And I'll probably be delivering that through email to the course of you and also to the city manager so that you have that. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions? Did I say under five minutes?
Well, whether you did or you didn't, it's, it's okay, but Councilman Rothschild has a comment.
Bless your heart.
The initiative, the 50 percent initiative, that's going to be on the November ballot?
They've already had a signature.
Is that language firm now?
I'm sorry?
Has the language been firmed up, or is it still in draft?
It has been firmed up. It will make the ballot.
And Edison's position on that initiative?
We're going to be against it.
Is opposition?
Absolutely. We are again at, at close to 17 percent of our portfolio is already renewable. We're trying to get to the mandate of 20 percent renewable by the, for the state by 2010. To get to 50 percent by 2025 is asking a great deal. The initiative, in our opinion, is poorly written. It is risky for not only the investor-owned utilities, but also for municipalities. It is very costly, and so this will, if you remember, the, the state of the energy crisis, this is actually going to be probably as big, and so we're going to ask you to take a look at that.
I, I don't know the language, but I know the, the content of it, and I've been reading some of the language coming out of the legislature. It is, it is probably a well-intentioned idea that has actually no practical value because it, the cost inherent in trying to get to that level of a renewable is just impossible without nuclear power on the table. Nobody even utters the word "nuclear power," so until you get that in play, there's no such thing as a 50 percent renewable level on this planet. So that's where we're at right now.
The technology is not there to support it, because you know, renewables are not always, are not always available. The wind does stop, the sun does stop shining, so there's, there's reasons that we need to have backup, and to get to 50 percent, we believe is just really risky.
Well, the city has invested interest in those programs. You know, everybody knows we're moving very aggressively on all levels of energy. We have the Ice Bear Machines, which we're using throughout the city facilities and implementing them in some private sectors as well. The new second unit power plant will have 50 megawatts of solar power attached to it, and we have been in some discussions about the possibility of even importing some energy from the Pacific Northwest from hydro. And I think we all have to pitch in and-
We definitely do.
-move aggressively to do as much green as we can, but I agree with Councilman Rothschild. Sooner or later, the society is going to have to come to grips with the fact that if we don't move to nuclear, we're not going to be turning the lights on with the regularity that we've all become accustomed.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Just wanted to add one more caveat since you're up here and talking about renewables. I, I think this is incredible in this state here. The Democrats come up with a lot of ideas about saving the planet and everything like this, and here you've got a city of five Republicans running, a very conservative city, and we're, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I'll bet you, I would put us up against any city in this state as being green. When you look at all of the components of the environmental issues that we have transformed in the last five years, you just handed a check for, to us for about $270,000 for our efforts on the solar and-
Absolutely.
-and the Ice Bear, and as I understand from Mr. Gargan, we're saving about $30,000 a year just on the solar component of it for the building alone. So it's incredible savings, and we've made a large step that way. So you put the incentives out there, we'll do it. If you put punishment out there, everybody goes away. So that's the difference between the two philosophies that are in play right now.
And the state of California is the most energy-efficient state in the nation. We lead the nation as far as energy efficiency, and yet we still have much we can do.
Our home became very energy-efficient when my daughters went away to college. Things improved dramatically. My Edison bill went way down. Nancy?
Thank you.
I have a question. It's just curiosity. Your infrastructure projects, are those mainly done in-house, or do you go on contract?
We have so much work, in fact, that much of it is done in-house, but we do have contractors that are doing much of the work. For Edison, we have a 10 percent, 10 percent growth rate that we still are going to be trying to catch up to with regard to our customers and our customers' advances and things. So whereas some people are slowing down, we're still growing with regard to making sure that we can, we can provide that, that power for our customers.
The reason I say that is because, you know, the, the more job, the more you can sub on or contract on, then you're providing jobs on.
Oh, absolutely. I don't have those figures, but I know we have figures like that.
Nancy, let the record reflect that you've got 15 minutes instead of five.
Oh, you guys asked some questions. That's not fair, but thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the proclamation and the presentation port, portion of the meetings. Now I have opened all of the various entities at one time. They're open concurrently. The first item on every agenda is public comment. Public comment is that opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the city council, the redevelopment agency, the airport authority, the rail authority, the water district, the library, or all. If you would go to the foyer and get one of these cards, fill it out, pass it to the city clerk, that will give us the information we need to communicate with you should whatever you share with us require that we do some research, or that we ask more information from you, or in some way communicate with you about what the council intends to do with regard to whatever you may share with us. Because under public comment, there's no way to be prepared, there's no way to know what is going to be shared with us at public comment, the general rule is that we do not respond to public comment. Take it under advisement and respond at some future date as the case may be. So if you're going to speak under public comment and/or at a public hearing that's scheduled later in the agenda, please fill out the cards and share them with the city clerk. I have a series of cards, and I will call them in the order that they have been given to me, and the first card is Norm Miller. Mr. Miller?
Mayor, council members, my name is Norm Miller, and I'm going to kind of take it to task a little bit right now because I didn't hear it too well, but maybe you could answer me the date of the Public Works Fair that's going to be.
Well, our Public Works Director is in the back of the room. Unless Mr. Roberts knows, I believe it's this weekend, but I'm not certain. Amir, when is the Public Works Fair? The following Saturday.
Thank you.
And the location? What time? You get that, Mr. Miller?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now back to whatever. I want to make a little statement here. As you know, I'm on the Ad Hoc Committee over in the Golden Triangle, and a couple years ago, I think it was or whenever, the Super Walmart wanted to put in a store there, and there's been a lot of flak on that. We got a notice from somebody that doesn't even live in Victorville that was, wanted to protest that, and now that's coming back, I guess, but now we're getting some problems over in the parking lot at Walmart, and it seems that we're starting to get some reaction again about how terrible Walmart is. I just want to make a statement that Walmart was a very nice place to shop until the gangbangers started coming up here a few years ago, so I don't think Walmart's the problem. I think it's the certain residents in Victorville and the surrounding areas that are the problems over at Walmart. Also, I'd like to make a comment. Recently, I put in for the water conservation toilets that are available for free, and you know, we're getting a lot of merchandise from China, we're getting food from China, our dogs are getting food from China. Well, I got these two toilets, they're from two different manufacturers, and they both were made in China. That's kind of interesting. But what I really want to talk about is the Visa program that was presented last month. And I kind of had a little scenario here I put together, and this is my opinion, but if we bring these people over here for, I believe it's like $500,000 or whatever it is, them and their families, which could be 10 or 15 family members, we don't know for sure yet, and they get over here and get the businesses started, then I read in the paper and on the news that there's nuclear submarines and airplane-carryable nuclear weapons hidden in China. And I just kind of put this together. We get all these people over here, and then they bring their nuclear submarines over here, and they park them somewhere between Santa Catalina and Hawaii, they can start sending their bombs over here. We won't have to have a conflict over here because the occupational forces will already be here. That's my opinion, and I have one question. It's politically correct to, I guess, call them Chinese-Americans, but would we call some of them Chinese, I'm sorry, communist-Americans? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I failed to mention, as I usually do, that under public comment, you are limited to three minutes. Dorothy Miller, next card up.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Dorothy Miller. We have a freeze on new employees, so why was there an article in the paper on April 18th for a water supply manager? The city manager says we have too many employees now. Why was the public department working on Sunday preparing for the park and fire station groundbreaking ceremony? Was this on overtime? Why was the trip to China so important? Have you seen the news about the nuclear subs? I feel that after OSHA did the fire station inspection and found all the mistakes, it is time for our chief to retire. He, he is in charge, so it should have been taken care of. I think the city should hire our own paramedics who would take care of all the people in the city. I would like a written answer, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next card up is Karen Reynolds.
I'm just curious as to, I have five acres, and I live on the outskirts of Victorville, close to Baldi Mesa, and my water pressure has gone down so hard, so low, that I can't even water my little pot of plants out on my patio. I stand there and just wait, and I have new hoses, no kinks, no nothing. If I go water my trees that I have in the front, which there's four of them, it used to take me an hour, maybe an hour and a half, now it takes me two to two and a half hours because of the way the hoses, because of the way the water trickles. If I'm out to have somebody helping me water, because I'm widowed now, if I'm having somebody help me water, I can't even take a shower. Or if I go to, want to wash my dishes, I don't understand that, and I've noticed it in the last four months, well, actually since after my husband died, I really noticed it a lot more because now I have to manage the property. So I wonder why I have such a low water shortage. I talked to a couple of my neighbors, and they said the same thing, that their, their water shortage has gone down. I mean, the, you know, the pressure.
Well, the water district manager's in the audience. We have your card, and he or somebody from his department will be in touch with you.
Great. Thank you.
You. Next card up is Rick Zamorano. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
There, your honor, and city council members, my name is Rick Zamorano. I'm the pastor of Victory Outreach Victorville, and what I would like to do is, is to give an invitation on the June the 7th, right there at the George, George Boulevard, the First Christian Church, we shared their building with them, and our thing that we're doing is the concern with the gangs, and we're going to be having a live drama called Blood In, Blood Out, and, and we've been here for 12 years within the city of Victorville, and when I came, it wasn't too much of the gang activity that was taking place back then. The only one I knew was the Victoria Gang, but now we know that there is other gangs that have come here, and we know that the city has given money to help the gang task force, and what we're looking is to work hand in hand with the city officials and also the police department to be able to take our place and the responsibility that God has given us for the city of Victorville. So I would like to give an invitation on that day. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Zamorano, and our Chief of Police is in the audience, and our Public Information Officer, and they will be in touch with you to see where we might be able to get you involved. Thank you. Next, Michelle Midner. I again, hope I pronounced it correctly. Again, I hope I pronounced it correctly.
Good evening. It's Medina, by the way. My main concern, I haven't been here in a while, but is if you can put, or maybe Public Works can do something about a stop sign in front of Brentwood Elementary off of Reno Loop and Hook. I can't tell you how many times I drive my children to school every day, my husband picks them up, there's an accident, there's kids running across the street. Sometimes they have crossing guards, not always, and that's on the other side of Reno Loop. However, there's kids walking all the way to Hook Junior High, and the new stoplight at Arlet in Hook was greatly appreciated, but I think there needs to be another one, or maybe if there's speed bumps or something, just to slow people down right there where there's a lot of kids and a lot of traffic, especially in the mornings. And that's basically about it.
Well, the city engineer's in the audience, and I'll ask him to take a look at that intersection and communicate with you. Thank you.
Michelle, I have a question. I know the city funds a portion of the crossing guard program. Have you talked to the school about why there seems to be intermittent crossing guard protection?
Well, there is on the other side, but it's not, I mean, usually it's the maintenance regenerator that will be there. However, there's kids coming from Skipper, there's kids coming from across the way, there's signs for parents to make a right, and you constantly get, even the principal's out there, and I've talked to her about it, and there's only so much you can do, and there's that many kids, that many parents, and they're just darting across. And it's a curve. So that's my only concern is...
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That completes all of the cards that I have received indicating a wish to speak under the public comment section. I have other cards for other items on the agenda, but I'm referring specifically to Agenda Item 1 on all of the agendas, which is public comment. Have I overlooked anybody under public comment? If not, then we will go through the regular agenda in the order. Library Board of Trustees Agenda has a consent calendar as Item 3. These items have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
For approval?
Second. Been moved and seconded, may we vote?
Ms. Gabrielles? Thank you.
Unanimous. Unless there's additional emergency add-on items to the library agenda, that would conclude the library agenda. The Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, again, we've taken care of Item 1. And Item 2, Item 3 is the consent calendar. Be adopted with one motion unless there's a request for removal.
For approval?
Moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Next is the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority Agenda. There are no revisions to that agenda that I'm aware of, Mr. Roberts.
There are no revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Then we will go to Item 3, which is the consent calendar. And again, these have been predetermined to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be adopted with one motion.
Second.
May we vote? Unanimous. Item 3B is a request for the authority to adopt the updated airport master plan, and we have been provided with a very extensive booklet, about that thick, that goes through everything that we're doing at the airport, which includes the power activities as well. And I understand from my notes that there is to be a PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Roberts.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, our Director of Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and our consultant are here to provide a brief presentation on the airport master plan.
Chairman Colwell, members of the authority, today's a very important day in the history of Southern California Logistics Airport. Presented for your consideration this evening is the update to the airport master plan. This three-year effort was led by one of the bests in the industry in the airport planning industry, that would be Kaufman Associates. Two of their principals, Mr. Jim Harris and Steve Benson, are here to give you a presentation and rather take up any more of their valuable time. I'll just turn the podium over to Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Mr. Chairman, members of the authority, very pleased to be here tonight. I want to just, first of all, compliment you on this facility. Very impressive. Last time we were before this group, we were in the old facility, so the high-tech and forward-looking vision of this facility is tremendous and certainly leads us a little bit into the master plan, because that's what the planning document is intended to do, is to be a 20-year, long-range planning document for the airport itself and its future. What we want to do is just take a moment and walk you through the recommendations of the master plan, a little background, and then certainly answer any questions you might have. First and foremost, the master plan, as Peter had mentioned, it started a while back, but real key to that, we've just put together a workflow board that illustrated a lot of the elements of the master plan. As I mentioned, it looks forward 20 years, establishing what some of the requirements of the airport will be based upon aviation demand in this area. Most important of this work effort was the formation of what was known as a Planning Advisory Committee. It's an independent task force, if you will, of stakeholders that sat in review of the work that was prepared by our company. We held four different committee meetings over the course of the master planning effort, and we also held public workshops to solicit comments from the public as the study was being produced. One of the things that we were asked to do at the very beginning of the study was actually to produce an economic impact or economic benefit study of the airport, to present a snapshot of the impact that the airport does have on the community and really the indication of the economic engine that the airport itself is. And very quickly, just wanted to summarize that when you look at the airport and the revenues that generated at the airport are about $621 million per year. This was in 2005, by the way. It has gone up substantially since then. The earnings in terms of payroll was over $100 million, and the employment was about 2,800 people were employed as a result of the airport in the area. So we just wanted to highlight that point. I do want to turn the mic over at this time to Mr. Steve Benson, who's going to walk through the recommendations of the master plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, Chairman, members of the authority. With the slide you see in front of you right now, it just gives indication that in planning any airport, we don't plan in a vacuum. We look not only at the airport and its community, but how it fits into an airport system nationally, statewide, and in this case, basically within the Los Angeles metropolitan area. So all that comes in as a factor as we start looking at the potential. This just shows you the commercial airport system within the area, and of course, there's other general aviation airports and airports throughout the basin that factor into what we look at. One of the first things then we look at is the demand and potential demand at the airport, looking at all the different potential areas from employments, which gives an indication of potential for airline or passenger traffic, air cargo potentials there, base aircraft, both civilian and potential military. And then, of course, the operations or the takeoffs and landings, they're kind of our indicators that become what we look at in basing our planning potentials for the airport. And you can see here a broad range of potential there from the numbers that we're at now to where we can head in the future. All basically different aspects of the airport are part of this. Some of the numbers you see, of course, the potential to grow to as many as 2 million annual employments, that what we're looking at is our planning level 3, and you see the air cargo tons at 500,000. However, you'll see as we go through here, we are planning for even higher than that, up to 3 million tons. 500,000 was based on kind of a spread of air cargo throughout the entire Los Angeles system, whereas with the level of activity we're expecting, there is potential to go even higher at that at any one given airport. And we're looking, of course, at this airport, at being able to meet that potential demand. So this is the airport layout drawing, kind of a white sheet with a fairly technical drawing that is critical with the master plan, and basically things that are on the airport layout plan, and after you adopt and approve the master plan, that they, who has reviewed it already, will then give their approval, and things that are on the airport layout plan become eligible for federal funding. So we'll go from this, and we'll look at it a little bit more colorful here with an aerial background and some of the things highlighted. And going through some of the key highlights of the recommendations, we'll start first with the airfield and some of the key points that what we looked at with the master plan and what basically we planned and designed for. First, with the airfield, we want to be able to accommodate the largest aircraft in the system, up to the A380-800 and Boeing 747-800, and everything down below that. So everything we've looked at, we've designed so, or planned so that the airport has the potential to handle those, both from a cargo standpoint and particularly from an aircraft maintenance standpoint in the future. And then with that and the growth in activity, one of the keys for the airport is a taxi waste system that can be efficient in getting aircraft to and from the airfield, as well as provides for safety, avoids potential runway incursions. Basically, that went into the plan of the taxi waste system. We plan for a, what is called a short austere airfield for the C-17 to practice its short takeoffs and landings on the airfield in the future. And we've planned an extension of runway 321, which would make that runway 10,000 feet compared to the primary runway at 15,000 feet. Probably the primary reason for that is the extension to the southwest, actually helps to, more for safety than actually for the extension of the runway, because it helps us avoid some runway incursions. So that was the primary reason for the plan, but it does make the runway 10,000 foot, which is an excellent length for a second runway. From the air cargo side, you see we've planned an initial south facility on the south side, in that location right there, to basically kind of be an incubator facility to get things going for air cargo here. Also, it serves well the industrial park developing now behind it. And then as traffic continues, or begins to grow, we move over to the west side of the airfield and have the potential to develop the cargo that we're talking about. Basically, the west side has a plan for, to be able to accommodate up to 3 million tons of air cargo in the future. Another key part of the airport is the aviation-related industry, which there is a lot of today at the airport. And the airport basically, as it was, is an Air Force Base, is coming back around and growing as an employment center for the area. And so we've continued to plan those types of uses where they are developing today, both on the east and west sides of the south ramp, and then also utilizing some of the frontage of the primary runway up here for large tracks to the north that, again, can accommodate large-type employment centers related to aviation. And we've also accommodated an aircraft testing area with some of that already in place, basically places where many of the maintenance facilities on the airport can test their aircraft. Another component, general aviation. The focus for general aviation at this airport is primarily on business aviation. We look at it primarily as a corporate gateway to the business park as well as to the community. We look primarily for the smaller aircraft to continue to use the other general aviation airports, such as Apple Valley, with SCLA focusing on the business aviation. You can see, we're centered on the middle of the ramp, where basically where the Millionaire Hangar is now for that FBO type of development, and then got spaces for corporate hangar development, both in that area as well as over on the east side of the airfield. Then the passenger terminal. We look, of course, we have the troop rotation services today, which anticipate to continue, and then looking as the potential grows with the community growing for airline service, initial service developing over on the south ramp with your terminal facility today and growing from that, basically that being the incubator. And as traffic develops, planning for the higher levels, up to 2 million employments over on the west side, again, making sure we use that critical frontage along that primary runway for aviation uses. And finally, military. Of course, although the airport space is gone, the airport does continue to support military activities, and we want to continue to be able to do that with the facility. And we've even planned with the unit up on the east end, also planning for the potential for a future military unit, marking an area that could be developed, that could be used for a reserve or a guard unit or something like that in the future. So those are all the key aspects on the basic recommendations. Kind of summarize quickly, you said it's a fairly thick booklet. And this is looking at the development costs over the planning period. We look at primarily on the plan being more of a demand-based plan rather than set on years, so as the demand comes, these are the things, as we have demand, say, in air cargo, these are things to move forward, to develop that. And as the demand grows in general aviation or with the airline, the same type of thing, they're all lined out there to move in the direction that needs to be gone. We look at the short term, basically what we anticipate in a, in general, a zero to five-year period, but some parts of it could stretch, again, based on demand, and intermediate term and long term, and the potential cost with that. You can see $160 million in the short term, much of that being eligible for federal funding with the 95% federal funding, and with the SCLA share being about 13.8 million of that. In the future, you see the numbers grow, and we start looking at more advanced and more capital improvements, particularly with cargo and with the airline activity. So you'd see larger numbers in there, pulling about $858 million for the basic plan. You see about $329 billion of that being the local share. A lot of that would be in the, if it would develop the terminal, and again, a lot of that would then be funded by the airlines using the terminal, as well as some federal funding in that. That's the overall plan. Again, this is another drawing, this basically outlines those land uses we talked about on the airport. It was part of the airport layout plan that moves forward. So with that, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Questions or comments from members of the authority? Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to compliment Kaufman and Associates. When they first began on this project, they thought we were rather ambitious when we required that the master plan facilitate 3 million tons of air cargo, which would make us one of the largest air cargo airports in the nation. But I think Kaufman became true believers when they sat down to put pen to paper to decide where we might plan to build a wide-body hangar. Jim Worsham and Jeff Kinzel went out and built four of them. And now we're planning, I think, on where we're going to put four or five more wide-body hangars. But this is an incredible master plan. Kaufman Associates and Peter Sotekwist have done a wonderful job of working with our neighbors over in Adelanto. A great deal of information has gone back and forth, and this is a master plan that, when put into place, and there's no doubt in my mind that it will be, will put SCLA on the map as one of the most vibrant airports in the nation.
Gabrielles?
Yes, on the control tower, it calls to relocate it. How critical is that, or what would be the timeframe for that?
The timeframe basically becomes, well, getting eventually in a better location to better see the overall airfield. Sitting over where it is with the primary runway now, 15,000 feet long, extended farther to the north, it's getting to be a long line of sight. I'd have to look it up to see, actually, when we call for that. I think it's in the short-term plan, but it needs to basically be upgraded, and we anticipate most of that would be federally funded.
Other questions or comments? Well, I'm going to ask you a really unfair question, but you've done a great job, you have a great reputation, not just because Jim Worsham and Peter Sotekwist are in the audience, who people we rely on quite heavily, but the city made a conscious decision in 1992 to aggressively pursue air cargo, focused initially at least on the Pacific Rim countries. And we've seen some of that. But I would be curious to know your view... But I would be curious to know your view as a person involved in the airport land use business and master planning, how you see the future in terms of air cargo in Southern California and us fitting into that jigsaw puzzle based upon our commitment to aggressively pursue that.
I think you're very well positioned. A lot of it has to do with timing, of course. In any major metropolitan area, a lot of it happens to be with the synergy of where the freight shippers are, where the freight forwarders are. A lot of that, of course, is focused right at LAX today, that some of it's starting to move out into other areas, but they're simply not going to be any more room for it at LAX. And so it's got to grow out from that. And being in a position where you can accommodate that without a lot of development, planning, protecting for this potential in the future puts you in a good position to be able to accommodate that in the future. You've got the frontage on a fifteen thousand-foot-long runway is going to be able to basically get you anywhere in the world. You continue to plan and protect your approaches from the noise sensitivities that where urban encroachments come into play on other airports. It puts you in a very strong position.
I've not had a chance to read the report because it's so thick, but I'm assuming that your material would, to a certain extent, address what we should be doing from a land use management standpoint, zoning and general plan to make sure we don't get the encroachments and the noise issues?
Yes, and there's also that will be coming back to you, the compatible land use plan will be coming back for approval that's being basically put together that further addresses that. Some of that's in the master plan, but that's been basically done alongside the master plan.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you for taking us as a client and thank you for working with those folks. Worsham and Sotekwist can be pretty demanding taskmasters, so I will apologize on behalf of the city for you having to labor in the vineyards with those guys because they're pretty committed.
Now, everybody here's been very excellent to work with. We've appreciated all the help we've had and the input that we've had in this whole process.
Thank you. Item four is-
Mr. Mayor, I think we're asking for a formal action by the Board of Directors to adopt the master plan update?
Been moved and seconded. I don't have a screen to vote on all of a sudden. Now we do. We have a motion. And second, may we vote to adopt Resolution SCLA A oh eight oh oh eight, which if adopted would authorize the execution and delivery of an amendment to forward the, oh, excuse me. It's not a resolution. It is just the authorization for the authority to adopt the update to the airport master plan. Is that the motion? Is that the second?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Item four on the agenda is proposed Resolution SCLA A oh eight oh oh eight, which if adopted would authorize the execution and delivery of the bond, the forward bond purchase agreement. And I should indicate that this is a companion item to City Council Agenda Item Number Eleven. I have three cards indicating a desire to speak to City Council Agenda Item Number Eleven.
May I call? Well, it's actually item number ten, I believe.
Oh, the cards I have from the people are number eleven and the and says on the agenda that it's a companion to Agenda Item Eleven.
That's a typo on the agenda. That should be item number ten.
No, it should be item ten. Then we will vote on Proposed Resolution SCLA A oh eight oh oh eight. Clear motion? Moved and seconded, may we vote? And that vote will also address Agenda Item Ten on the City Council Agenda. Thus, there's an add-on urgency item to the airport authority that would complete that agenda.
Are no additional items, Mr. Chairman?
Then we'll go to the redevelopment agency agenda. Item three, the consent calendar. Been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, may we vote? Item four is a request to approve an additional appropriation of fifty-five thousand in connection with the agency's purchase of the former Forest Park property and to authorize the execution of the certificate of acceptance to the grant deed. May we vote? We also have an addendum to this agenda, which will be a closed-session item. I would defer to Mr. Devois to ask you to make the findings for this addendum.
Yes, this is pursuant to, actually, this is an addendum item, so it's appropriately agendized. It's not, we do not have to add the item, but it is a closed-session item pursuant to Government Code five four nine five six point eight. It's regarding real property negotiations between the City of Victorville and the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Victorville Mitsubishi, and it affects property on the other side of the freeway at the intersection of La Paz, and I believe it's Civic Center Drive, no, Civic Drive.
All right, it will be added to the agenda. At the conclusion of the regular agenda, we were going into closed session on a number of items, and this will be one of them, and I will speak to that as we complete the City Council Agenda. The next item is the Water District Agenda. We have a public hearing scheduled for two proposed resolutions, VWD oh eight oh oh five and VWD oh eight oh oh six. And if these are adopted, they will determine fix and establish levies for the collection of standby availability charges for District Number One and for District Number Two. We will deal with Items Three A and Three B concurrently. Before I go to the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from members of the council or additional information from staff? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing on Water District Agenda Items Three A and B, the proposed resolutions which I enumerated. I'll invite anyone in the audience who wish to be heard for or against, pro or con, on either or both of the proposed resolutions, which if adopted will deal with the issue of standby availability charges. Anyone who wishes to be heard? Hearing no public interest, I will close the public hearing. There are, there are cards. There are cards from, first one would be Roger Glenn.
That would not be me.
Well, we'll take them in the order that they came up. So Roger Glenn?
Yes, Mayor Colwin in the councilman. My name is Roger Glenn. I've been a resident here since nineteen sixty-four. I own properties here in the high desert. I own two parcels down off of D Street that have been a easement for a right-of-way called Pearl Arbor Terrace. It's been that way for over sixty years. I got the county to remove the taxes from the property because it's, I can't use it for anything. I bought it to adjacent my other properties. Took me ten years to get the water district to drop the charges on it each year for the standby. And now they say they're going to put it back on, and I'd like to know why. And you can't have standby water for a road. The city won't take the road. They've got redevelopment, they're trying to negotiate for me to give them the road to adjacent my property, which is above which I have now for sixty-three units, homes to be built up there. But I don't understand how they can put a standby back on parcels that's a road. That's my comment. I'd like, I don't want to fight them for another ten years if, you know, with the economy the way it is, it's put a damper on putting the units on with the rest of the investors right now.
Well, Mr. Glenn, I don't know the answer to your question. It's a legitimate question. The people in our senior staff who are involved with that are here and don't know whether Mr. Lamson and/or Mr. McGlade are prepared to respond to that right now. If not, then I will ask them to meet with you tomorrow, if that's available, if that's the time for you and sort this thing out. I know the area you're talking about.
It's a slum down there.
It's a legitimate question, and we'll try to get it resolved.
Yes, I just couldn't understand why it took me ten years to get them to understand that it was a road to get the money off, and now they want to put it back on again. Thank you.
Well, one of them will give you their card, and they will meet with you at your convenience tomorrow if that works for your schedule.
Mayor and councilman, this is a question I need to ask you that over in the north, over in North, North Victorville, Bellevue Heights area over there, this water, my daughter is out of town, but she owns a property, but my question is that we are connected with the Apple Valley Rancho Water District. And my question is that why we have this standby fee that we have to pay, that's what the question is about here, and that's all I wanted to ask you.
Mr. Burnell, I know the area where you're talking about as well, and if perhaps you could catch Reggie Lamson, who's out there in the hall talking to Mr. Glenn, and if your schedule permits, perhaps you could meet with him tomorrow sometime to discuss this. I don't have an answer, but you're right. I know the area is served by the Apple Valley Ranchos, and it's a legitimate question. Cliff Rothjohn, if I've pronounced it correctly.
It's a long O, Rothjohn. Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, part of my question is just plain ignorance because I'm not sure what a standby fee really is. I'm concerned predominantly that, I'm fairly conservative in my water usage because I do live in the desert, have for virtually all my life. I typically use less than thirty dollars a month with my five acres and Baldi Mesa, used to be part of Baldi Mesa Water District, now part of Victorville Water District. I'm looking at, and perhaps I'm misreading that as well, it looks like I'm getting to be levied approximately four times where I was normally paying a month just for the privilege of being there, not using a drop. I just got through hearing from a gentleman, Mr. Miller. There might be also something else I can use, like the water conservation tools that are apparently available free gratis for me, which I will definitely look into to help reduce my footprint, if you will, my water footprint. Am I misunderstanding the levy, the standby thing? Is that actually going to be done or is that just in case you need it?
Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The standby charge on Improvement District Number Two, which is the former Baldi Mesa Water District, has been in place since nineteen sixty-nine, and there had been debt that was issued by the Baldi Mesa Water District against that standby fee. And so in order to continue to cover the debt, the standby fees need to continue to be collected. On Improvement District Number One, which is the former Victor Valley Water District, the charge is ten dollars per acre per year, and that is only assessed on vacant, unimproved land that is not served, but that is located within six hundred and sixty feet of available water service. So if it's, if it's a piece of property that's already being served, this fee is not going to have an impact on District Number One.
I'm actually in District Number Two, but former Baldi Mesa-
Well, District Number Two, the fees are, there's not, I don't know that there's an increase. This is a fee that has already been in place primarily, right, primarily this is adopting a fee in District Number One. District Number Two already has the fee in place, and it was established and put at the level of fifteen dollars by the former Baldi Mesa Water District. And now that we have a new, now that those water districts have been merged into the Victorville Water District, we need a resolution that essentially just affirms and continues the standby charge that was already put in place by the Baldi Mesa Water District so that we have the legal authority to continue to collect that money and service the debt that was already issued.
Okay, so basically it's just a form of grandfathering what I had agreed to before into you guys' current budget? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's all the cards I have for Three A and B. Are there any other individuals in the audience who wish to address the council in the public hearing portion on these two resolutions, VWD oh eight oh oh five and VWD oh oh eight? Anyone who has not submitted cards who wishes to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And a motion to adopt both resolutions in one motion is appropriate. Moved and seconded, may we vote? It's unanimous. Item four is the consent calendar. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous, unless there's an add-on item that that would conclude the Water District Then we will go to, we will go to the City Council Agenda, and we've already dealt with Item One, which is public comment, and we have revisions to Agenda Item Number Eleven. Are there any other revisions or addendums to the City Council Agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there's an addendum regarding presentation or request to approve limited notice to proceed with Kiwan power constructors for the construction of Victorville Two Power Plant. That's also a convenient package.
And it is. And that concludes the revisions to the agenda?
Correct. And with respect to the revision to Item Eleven, I can actually address that when you get to Item Eleven if you'd like.
Do it at that time. Then we will go to Agenda Item Three, which is a continued public hearing dealing with development impact fees. That has been continued to May twentieth, but it is a continued public hearing, so I'll invite anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard for or against on this item, recognizing the council's taking no action tonight, and this item will be continued to May twentieth. Anyone here on Agenda Item Three, dealing with development impact fees? If not, we'll go to Item Four, which is a public hearing to consider Proposed Resolution oh eight oh seven five, which if adopted would make determinations and confirm assessments and proceedings for unpaid rubbish collection, sewer use fees, storm fees, hazardous waste fees, and Assembly Bill Nine thirty-nine fees. Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Not, I will open the public hearing. I have received one card indicating, excuse me, two cards indicating they wish to address the council on this item. The first is George Washington.
Mr. Mayor and councilman? Yes, back in July of two oh six, I purchased four units in Victorville, and I pretty much got enough money that I needed to fix them up. And what happened, two weeks after I purchased them, one tenant moved out. And then the following month, I had to get three evictions. I had to evict three people. So I had four units that was occupied, and then I have four units that are empty. So what I'm saying is that when I purchased, I didn't know I needed to put grass, plus they told me I needed a business license. I have not made no money from these units since I had them. I hadn't had them since two oh six, and I have made no money on the units. And they told me I needed a business license plus grass. I took out the money necessary to do these things, but that, but it was occupied when I purchased them. Then they were empty. Then I had one of them that was empty until about March of this year. So I've been losing money just trying to keep afloat to get to keep them occupied. So I got them all occupied now, but then I ended up moving over there so I could comply to what you want done. So the other house, I would have had to let that go, try to get this done. So I'm not in the house over there where they sent this to the wrong address to. This here went to the wrong address, but like I'm trying, I'm complying to what need to be done, but I don't have enough time to do it because I wasn't making any money.
So is the thrust of your request, if I read it correctly, is that you need more time to be able to deal with this?
Yes, I need more time. Yes, I need more time to deal with this because I haven't made any funds.
Well, I will defer to Mr. Roberts or Mr. DeBortnase. This is an outstanding ordinance, been on the books for twenty years or more. I don't know whether there's any ability to extend compliance dates or not. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the issue, the city, you've been contacted regarding unpaid sewer and trash fees?
No, it was a letter I got that said I needed grass. It was something, I need grass in front of one of the properties, which I did address and it's got tree roots up there which kill most of it.
That's a separate issue than this action in front of the council. This action in front of the council is for collection of unpaid sewer-
Oh, no, I don't have none of that.
And trash, but that's a good thing.
Yeah, all I still care.
But if you could get together with Bill Webb, he has his hand up right over there.
Okay.
And he's the Director of Development, which covers your issue, and he will get together with you and work on what your issue is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Robin Wilson.
Caldwell and City Council members, my parents received notification of their delinquent bill and that possibly going to have their home put a lien on it for three hundred and fifty dollars. They're not understanding this. My father was just recently forced to retire due to health reasons. He's right now at Long Beach Veterans Cancer Facility being treated. My mother, to take care of him, had to give up her job. So they have some back funds coming. They're wanting to find out, you know, if there's someone I can speak with on their behalf to help get this postponed, you know, a deferment until this other fund comes in from his social security disability because he was being docked. They went from an income of four thousand dollars a month down to seventeen hundred dollars a month. And they're just really, really one of those people. They've been here for twenty years. They help their neighbors, they help everyone in the community that they can. No matter how little they got coming in, they're always trying to help somebody else out. And I'm just trying to find out, you know, clear this up for them. They're worried that while they're down there dealing with his health, their house is going to be sold for three hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, I think you're asking on behalf of your parents for some type of hardship consideration so that the house doesn't get sold.
Yes.
Well.
Is there anyone, I tried to call the Department of Sanitation, they told me to come here.
Told you to come here?
They told me that it was going to be discussed tonight, that the issue is going to be discussed tonight to come and this is the type of thing I get when I go here.
I will give you my word that we're not going to sell your house, your parents' house, for three hundred and fifty dollars. Now, having said that, there are people in City Hall who deal with this subject every day. Before you leave, the appropriate senior staff sitting back there will stick their hand up and give you a name and a telephone number. The Director of Public Works just raised his. We'll sort something out for you, but we're not going to sell your house for three hundred and fifty dollars. Especially after you were told to come here and raise this issue and it wasn't handled at the staff, so you have my word, your parents' house will not be sold.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comment who wishes to speak to the council on this public hearing item dealing with the fees? Proposed Resolution-08075. If not, I will close the public hearing. Council, you have Resolution-08075, a motion would be in order. They're seconded. Seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Item Five is the consent calendar.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, may we vote?
Oops, I missed. Where am I?
You're there.
Okay.
Unanimous. We'll deal with Items Six and Seven together. Proposed Resolutions-08076 and 0877, which if adopted will authorize a sanitary district fee credit agreement. And other questions or comments from members of the council? If not, a motion to adopt both resolutions would be in order. Moved and seconded, may we vote? Unanimous. Agenda Item Eight is a request to order a contract to new legacy development for sidewalk and curb ramp improvements out of the CDDG funds in the amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-one cents. Seconded, may we vote? Agenda Item Nine is Proposed Resolution-08079, which if approved would authorize the city clerk to dispose of certain records for the Victorville Water District.
Second.
Moved and seconded, may we vote? Agenda Item Ten, I believe we've already dealt with that as a part of the previous agenda. Let's get us to Number Eleven and we will defer this for the moment. DeBortnase?
Mayor Caldwell, this is a resolution of necessity pertaining to three properties listed on your agenda. They are parcel numbers three zero nine three one 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 zero two, three zero nine three one 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 zero four, three zero nine three one two one zero one. This is not an open public hearing for all of the public, but it is certainly a hearing for the benefit of the affected property owners and an opportunity for them to address the council with any concerns in connection with the proposed resolution of necessity. The resolution of necessity would seek to authorize the proceeding into an eminent domain action with respect to property that is required for the Nisqually interchange property. And it affects property essentially that is on the, I think it's on Mariposa Road. The resolution before you, I would like to, with respect to the revision of the council agenda items, add one section to that resolution that you have on the dice before you and I'd like to read it into the record. It would be a new Section 5A in order to ensure compliance with Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1245.245. And the provision in the resolution should be included to read. Section 5A, the properties acquired by this resolution shall only be used for the public purpose stated in the resolution unless the council, by at least a two-thirds vote, adopts a resolution authorizing a different use of the property, which provides, one, a general statement of the new public use proposed with reference to the statute authorizing the use of the power of eminent domain; two, the description of the general location of the property with sufficient detail for reasonable identification; and three, the council's finding that the public interest and necessity require the proposed use, that the proposed use is planned and located in a manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury, and the property is necessary for the proposed use. If that is included in the proposed resolution for your consideration, and before you did that, I would open it up for any public comments by affected members of the property.
Before we go, there are questions or comments from members of the council? Not, I have received three cards. The first is from Jose Chicas.
My attorney, he wasn't be able to make it because he went home ill today and we like to know if it's possible to reschedule my matter.
I have a second card from Jose Chicas. Is that you?
Yeah, that's me.
So it's two cards, one person?
No, I just filled out one.
So I mean, two cards, but one person, you.
Yeah.
And the second card indicates that your attorney is Stanley Hodge?
Yes, Stanley Hodge.
Mr. DeBortnase, I don't know the process or the procedure under this issue.
Well, you know, the resolution of necessity is drafted so that it affects three properties. Mr. Chicas is one of the property owners it's affected. Your choices would be to, again, Mr. Chicas obviously would like his attorney to make a representation to him. You could bifurcate the matter and continue to consider the resolution of necessity with respect to the remaining two parcels and continue the resolution of necessity with respect to his parcel. Or if you so desire, you could continue the entire matter to a meeting, open the hearing again and then continue the matter to the next meeting. My understanding, though, there is some time constraints with respect to proceeding with this project. Since it's a Caltrans project, we are the lead agency and we are running up against some deadlines.
Well, let me call the other person who wants to speak and let them speak and then we'll see what we're going to do with your request.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a card from Aurelio Nunez. Nunez?
First of all, I would like to know about the card. When was that submitted and what does it say? I mean, I didn't fill it out.
Did it get notice?
Mayor Caldwell, we were contacted in the city clerk's office by somebody on your behalf asking that we submit cards to speak tonight. And I'm sorry, I didn't speak to the person personally, so I don't know who my staff spoke to, but that's why there's a card submitted in your name.
Can I ask, what does it say? I mean, what else? Is it asking a question or, I mean, because I didn't submit one today.
Well, the card just indicated that you wanted to speak to the council. The issue in general terms is the acquisition of needed property for the proposed Nisqually-Lamesa interchange. And there are three parcels that have yet to be acquired. And the issue before the council tonight is whether or not to authorize the acquisition of those three parcels through the powers of eminent domain, which allow a unit of government to acquire private property for a public purpose. So that's what the agenda item is all about. I have no way of knowing who submitted this card for you or on your behalf, but do you have property that is located in the proposed Nisqually interchange footprint?
Yes, I do. But like I said, I did not submit the card. Is there a way I can, I mean, since I'm here, can I just say something?
Sure, absolutely. That's what it's for.
Okay. I read on the paper, the Daily Press today, that there has been an attempt in, I guess, various negotiations which the city has failed. And what I believe is that the negotiations really haven't been there because after the first offer that was made by the city, like I told Debbie from Epic Land Solutions, which is working with the city, we were willing to negotiate. I mean, I just don't know why they, this was in public today at the Daily Press newspaper, saying that every attempt was done on their behalf when honestly I feel that we're coming down hundreds of thousands of dollars to negotiate and to get this over with because, I mean, it's not only me that I'm the owner, it's also my wife and my in-laws. And I mean, it's, of course, it's been more than a year about negotiations. We have attempted to negotiate dropping down hundreds of thousands of dollars in which, at the same time, the city is coming up pennies, which is basically, I mean, I don't see an attempt in negotiating. And I mean, I understand this is going to go through eminent domain or through eminent domain. And so I guess we'll just see what happens at that stage. And I told the city I was willing, I told Debbie, we were willing to negotiate without an attorney because they are very expensive and as everybody's aware, they do charge minimum thirty-three percent of what is, let's say if we make any income, they're going to take thirty-three percent and I told Debbie it is not fair that we're trying to make what is the fair market value because that's what we're going to get. And the difference here on the fair market value, our appraisal versus or compared to the city's appraisal, we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. We're not talking about fifty thousand dollars. And that's a big difference when we're talking about fair market value. So it just comes down to which is the actual fair market value? Is it theirs or ours or, I mean, but like I said, we were willing to negotiate without an attorney. If, I mean, I do have attorneys that I have spoken with and they are ready to take the job in which I just didn't feel that it was fair for me to pay them thirty-three percent of what is our property. And at the same time, I am willing to work with the city. Thank you.
Let me, what is the deadline with regard to the Caltrans issue? And let me preface it by telling you, it better be an important, critical deadline because if we're up against it and have to do it, I want to know that. But if there's enough slack, I want to know that too.
I checked previously with the city engineer. I think we can delay it for a couple of weeks. And, but Sean, you said we're sort of in a ninety-day window, I believe?
We continue this till our next regularly scheduled council meeting, two weeks? Does it put us in a bind within the Squali interchange? Should or shouldn't? All right.
Mayor Caldwell, let me also, if I may, we will continue regardless to negotiate with the property owner. We have been-
One comment on that.
Okay.
As to the request from Jose Chicas, we will continue it, two more weeks. Tell Mr. Hodge that if he's ill, he needs to send one of his associates because we are getting close on time. You know, we want to make sure that you and your attorney have an opportunity to present whatever it is, but we're getting tight, so please tell Mr. Hodge if he can't make it, to send Mr. Batumian or somebody, okay? And we will continue it at your request for two more weeks. We'll continue yours if you want us to continue it, which will give you two more weeks to have discussions with Epic and anybody else that I can't continue it, I'm not going to continue it unless you want me to continue it.
I don't because I feel that our negotiations are done and over with. I mean, I feel that we basically didn't get anywhere with the negotiations and, I mean, if the next step is to go through eminent domain, then that's what the city has to do. I mean, I don't see the use of two more weeks in which we already attempted for over one year to negotiate. I mean, I don't feel that two weeks is going to make any difference.
I understand your position. The way the eminent domain process works, we're required by law to get a good faith appraisal with fair market value. We are required to share that with you. You're not required to accept it. You have the right, which obviously you've exercised, to get your own appraisal. Epic is our agent trying to bridge the difference. If that's not possible, then a judge will decide whether your appraisal's right or our appraisal's right or something in between. That's just, that's the way the process works. But based upon your request and the fact that apparently the third property owner is not here.
That's correct.
Then I would move that we adopt the resolution as to Mr. Nunez's property and as to the property owner who's not present here tonight and that we continue the item for the Jose Chicas property.
Appropriate. The Chicas property, just for the record, would be parcel number three zero nine three one two one zero one, which is one of the exhibits on the resolution of necessity. And notwithstanding, if the council does adopt the resolution of necessity, it still does not prevent us from continuing to negotiate and trying to reach a settlement.
Is there a second to my motion? May we vote? Thank you. That concludes the cards that I have on all subjects and that concludes that, no, it doesn't. Agenda Item Twelve, Request- That con- no, it doesn't. Agenda item twelve, request to approve, uh, one million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars from Prop one B funds for local streets and road improvements, congestion relief, and traffic safety. Your motion?
They're moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, may we vote? is, uh, a claim against the city. Claim number oh eight oh five, filed by Martin Spengler. I move that that claim be denied, referred to city staff, uh, for further processing.
Second.
Second, and may we vote? Item fourteen, presentation of reports from council members. Mr. Gabriel.
Other than we, uh, we had a event this morning that, um, we're in a park station in the park, and I think, uh, that speaks for our employees, working together to-
I agree. Pro Tim Almond?
Yes, it was a very pleasant morning. Um, I just want to say one thing. Everybody sitting out there, every staff member, every department head does a beautiful job, but I had to do something for the first time in all the years I've been a council member. Uh, I had to call one of our department heads on Sunday and, um, told him that there was a leak in the middle of the street. It wasn't just a little leak. It looked like a river. And Reggie's wife was very pleasant when I said, "I am so sorry to bother you, but I need to speak to your husband." She didn't even ask who I was. Handled him the phone.
Still was supposed to be.
But, uh, I know all the department heads do a great job, but that was the first time I ever had to call somebody on a weekend.
Okay. Councilman Rothchild?
I was the one that set the policy of the cell phone ringing. And I'm here to let you know, I'm paying my debt. It's five dollars if your phone goes off in here while we're having a council meeting. I couldn't get it off fast enough when it rang a second time. Here, I'm passing my ten dollars down so everybody knows that council members paid the fine, just like everybody else. Put it down there. Get your hands off.
Make that-
I'm not giving it to Carol Lee.
Goes to Carol Lee.
So anyway, I, I paid my fine. My bill's good.
John Solomon should get that.
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no comments.
I have none. We will now go into closed session.
Mayor Caldwell, if I may, for the record, previously when I mentioned redevelopment agency item, I think I misspoke with respect to the, the, uh, location. It's Valley Center Drive and La Paz for the redevelopment agency property.
All right. We'll go into closed session. I'll invite the appropriate senior staff to join us. I will tell you that-
Mayor Caldwell, also, I apologize. We have the addendum you haven't taken action on for the city council item, which is the, uh, limited notice to proceed, and it's an important item.
Oh, I was going to, no, no, no. I was going to go into closed session and then come out and deal with a limited notice to proceed, so that members of the audience who have an interest in that would have to wait. All right. We have the addendum, uh, which has been added to the agenda, uh, to deal with the approval of a limited notice to proceed with Kiwit power construction for construction of Unit Two. We've been provided with, uh, detailed, uh, comments as well as a copy of the limited notice to proceed. Are there questions or comments from members of the council?
Move for approval.
Hearing none. There's been a motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded, may
Member Almond?
Unanimous. Anything else? We have forgotten, Mr. D. Bortnasey.
I believe that's it. I apologize for that late catch.
Now, I'll invite the appropriate senior staff into closed session for the reasons that are enumerated on the agendas. It is not anticipated or envisioned that there'll be any action coming out of the closed session. However, we cannot guarantee that. Uh, you're welcome to stay here and wait and see. If you wish to leave, that's fine. If we come out of closed session and there's nobody here, we will not be offended. Thank you for coming, and, uh, council will now adjourn to closed session.
The city council concluded their closed session at ten thirty PM with no reportable action being taken.